Okay.
On a weathered goat or something on a breedable goat.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call to order the planning board meeting for Monday, July 10th, 2023. As a reminder, this meeting is happening at Town Hall for those who are watching online or on TV. If you're watching via Zoom, just remember that it's, we love to offer that, but if there's a technical issue, that doesn't render the meeting invalid. It is happening here and you're always welcome to come on down. We will open with public comment. Just want to make sure we have everyone in the waiting room if they're.
Yeah, there's no one in the waiting room. There is someone online, but they do not have their hand raised.
Cool. I always forget to let people in from the waiting room when I run meetings. All right. The first item listed on the agenda is a public hearing for 525 Chase Road, but we also have an A&R plan, so I'd just like us actually to switch that, sorry. I just want us to switch that up because A&R's are typically quicker. So we'll look at the A&R plan for 1325 Massachusetts Avenue.
Sorry, I wasn't ready for that. Sorry, no problem. I'm trying to be quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Greg Roy with Dulles &amp; Roy. And I'm here for an A&R plan as you, as you mentioned at 1325 Massachusetts Avenue. You may recall several months ago, we were before you for a site plan approval for this property. We permitted a contractor storage facility in the back and then two office uses in the front. The office use furthest to the north is actually this way, so furthest to the east was intended, is intended to be on its own lot. So we are before you this evening with an A&R plan that creates that lot. So no changes to the site plan this evening, just formalizing the A&R plan. So the, we would create two lots, both have adequate frontage and area in the commercial zoning district. We've also created on this plan the various access utility and drainage easements that are required because of course some of the infrastructure is being shared as a result of the site plan approval that we did. So I think that's all. I think it's fairly straightforward, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
No, it does, it does appear to be pretty straightforward from.
I would agree.
Looking at it.
I, I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So this, this entire parcel before it's, the A&R is all commercial, right?
Correct.
And there's an existing dwelling on there?
Yep.
And it's remained. I haven't seen it come down yet.
Yes, although it is intended to be demolished.
It is intended to be demolished.
Yeah, I think sometime this fall is the intent, is the intention. But it complies with the setback, so the dwelling is. That right there.
Yep.
So the dwelling would be on Lot 1 as it's shown on the plan, but it, it complies with, with setbacks, so we're not causing any.
And the dwelling we're talking about is that, if memory serves, that, that house that kind of stands up in stark contrast to.
Yeah.
The, the grand earth moving that has occurred.
It's kind of sticking, especially with the earth removal operation, it's sticking out like a sore thumb now, yeah. But the, the applicant has, has obtained permission from the historical commission or the, his horse, historical commission, can never remember which, which board it is, but to do demo delay. So they did, they did authorize demolition of that to waive the demolition, the 18-month demolition delay. So I think there's still a tenant in there that maybe has a lease that's up in September. So I think the idea would be to take the building down right after that's, right after that's over.
So, and, and this is a question from what you just said. So the demo delay, I understood to apply if they didn't approve demolition. If they approved the demolition, then you can demolish it immediately, is that?
That's right.
Okay.
The historical commission waived the demolition delay.
They, yeah, they waived the, the hold time, which I think is 18 months.
So, okay, yes. So a question to the land use director. Is, if, if we approve this A&R tonight, is there anything that would preclude the applicant from go ahead and selling that house as a house lot and continuing the commercial development on the back lot?
Is there anything that would preclude it? I'm going to say maybe the cliff in front of the house, but, but probably, no, there is nothing that would preclude them from doing that. It's, 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 it's an existing residential lot that is continuing to be used that way. If he were to choose to abandon the previously approved plan and leave the house, I guess in theory he could do that. So there may be a need at that point for an amendment to the site plan because the site plan was approved in a way that the access is, it's, it's cross-access from what's now Lot 1 to Lot 2.
Yep.
And part of that access there was to allow for fire and emergency vehicles. So I, I think if, if that was a choice that was made, there would need to be some discussion with the board about.
Modification.
How to modify the, the site plan. But the use on the property is currently residential and could condition, could continue as pre-existing non-conforming.
Even with the existing permit that's been approved?
Correct, because the, the, the residential use has not been given up yet.
Right, I guess, I guess that's the point that I.
Similar to like a 61 parcel. If you had a chapter 61A farm, you could come to this board and get us a subdivision approved. And that doesn't trigger any notice to the town because you're not necessarily going to exercise that at this point. But once you go to sell it or make moves to activate that subdivision, then that would trigger the notice. And I know they're not the same, but they're sort of analogous.
No, I just, and to give the history to the people that may or may not be aware of it, this parcel came to us for earth removal, didn't come to us, went to the select board because that's under their bailiwick. And then they came to us for the stormwater permit for the.
And stormwater and site plan.
Stormwater, site, well.
Stormwater first.
They didn't know what, they didn't know, they know that they wanted 70,000 square feet of impervious, but they didn't know what they were going to.
But earth removal was listed as a use, so it was done as a site plan for.
Okay.
The use of earth removal.
But then the drainage system was installed at that time, we had no idea what the intention was.
That's correct.
So I just, I just want to remind you of the, the history on this site.
That's right.
Thank you.
As far as the A&R, it looks completely.
Hmm, all right. Unless there's further questions, I would look for a motion.
Move that we approve the A&R for 11325 Massachusetts Avenue?
I will second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Can come by tomorrow and pick those up?
Great. That was the A&R plan for 1325 Mass Ave. Next up, we will go for the public hearing for 525 Chase Road.
Going to sleep twice.
And.
I'll read it.
Thank you.
It was just loading. It's thinking, there we go, okay. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on July 10th, 2023, 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review a site plan approval application under chapter 250-8.4 of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg for 525 Chase Road, parcel number 033-0014-00. Applicant and owner are 525 Chase Road LLC of 26 Norfolk Street, Fitchburg, Mass. 01420. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office at 960 Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass.
Great, thank you.
So good evening, Brian Marchetti with McCarty Engineering. As you just said, I'm here tonight on behalf of 525 Chase Road LLC. Owner's Chad Zright, he's with us here tonight as well. The applicant bought this parcel a couple of years ago. It was an existing automotive repair use. It's a 1,500 square foot building on an acre lot. The applicant intends to put a 3,000 square foot addition on the building and that's why we're here tonight. It triggers site plan review because it's greater than a 25% expansion of the facility. So the existing site, as I said, it's an acre. It's served by overhead electric. There's septic system on site and a well on site. The river across the street is jurisdictional. There is riverfront area on the property, but it's outside of all of our limited disturbance. So no conservation commission permitting is required for this. It's only site plan review through planning board. The intended use here is a 3,000 square foot addition that's primarily to be used for a trade shop and storage. Chad operates a powder coating business and this is intent to expand to this property. Currently he's in Fitchburg. So as part of this development, to put the, facilitate the 3,000 square foot addition, there's going to be some site work required on the property. Just to clear the area. The backside of the existing building. I'll show that here. As you see here, this is the grading that's going to be required to clear the area behind. The existing well is right behind the building. It's up at a higher elevation, which is kind of on top of slope, so we're going to have to lower that. But it's all, all doable and outside the, the limits of our, our building footprint. Stormwater wise, we don't trigger the Lunenburg stormwater permit because it's less than an acre disturbance. However, as part of a development of the site, it is commercial, so we do trigger the mass stormwater standards. So for stormwater, we're collecting the entire rooftop and a roof leader system and putting it to a dry well. And then at the toe of slope here around the, the northwest and south side of the building, we have a peystone diaphragm at the toe of slope. We're not proposing to add any pavement back here. The limit of pavement here on the actual property ends down here by the right of way and it's pretty much all gravel driveway, so we're going to continue the gravel driveway around the building. So the grade will be graded away from the building back toward that peystone diaphragm. So all stormwater that falls on the building, we put to the dry well and everything on the slope and around the building will go to that peystone diaphragm. The soils here are all hydraulic A soil, very similar. This, it's the same soil that we did across the street and when we did the culvert at the DPW yard, it's all basically an A sand. So infiltration wise, it has a very high capacity for infiltration here. With these two B and, stormwater BNP's proposed, we meet all the stormwater standards. We're mitigating the pre-post design flows to lessen existing. We're recharging four times the required recharge volume. We're providing almost twice the required water quality volume. It's almost a two-inch volume where you'd be required for a one-inch. So we're exceeding all the mass stormwater maintenance standards for this design. You can see here, I'm showing parking striped, or not striped, it's dashed here. Because it's all gravel, the intent here is just to show that we can fit way more than adequate what's proposed or what's required by the regulations. Trade shop, you have one space per 300 square feet of working floor area, which gives us five spaces required for the 3,000 square feet of storage and support for a trade shop. There's no parking requirement for that. So it's five is what's required and we're providing 10 spaces here. And, and it can go more. And right now this is, building has two garage bays here, so right now cars just park right in front of it. So it's not a heavily used property yet, you know, and I don't anticipate it's ever going to really be heavily used, but we have more than enough area here to accommodate the required parking. As I said before, there's an existing well on site that serves the property, so we're going to maintain using that well. The septic system is off-site here, not off-site, but it's off the south side of the building. It's, the bathroom inside the building pumps it up to the septic system. And there's no new office space, it's a wide open footprint. So we've talked to Insure Board of Health and they've agreed that there's no requirement to upsize the septic system for this addition. Jim Greffy did ask a few questions on Friday. I responded to them today. Specifically, he was asking about seeing foot, a, a actual plan of what's going on in the building. The applicant doesn't have site plans yet for the actual building construction, the addition construction. I responded to Jim Greffy that we would provide the plans before we go for billing permits. But again, it's an open footprint. It's basically a wide open trade storage area. So there are no offices, things like that in there that would require an expansion of the septic system. Additionally, we have a garage, one garage door is going to be on the side here, so we've shown a trench drain inside the building. And because it's septic, the trench drain will go to a tight tank. That tight tank has to be obviously per code, which it will be. And the only other requirement that Jim Greffy said was it had to be at least 50 feet from the well. And the wellhead's here and the closest corner is about 55 feet from the wellhead. So we're outside of that 50-foot setback requirement. So utility wise, that pretty much covers it. Access is the same. You can see here, this is the edge of, of Chase Road and Route 13. The right of way is about 25 feet back onto the property. It's all paved within that 25 feet. Then the driveway continues up beyond it. So access isn't changing. So for fire access, it's an existing facility that's been operated this way for as long as it's been in existence. There's a, there's a wide curb cut over here and then there's a wide curb cut here beyond. There's a big island in front of the site. As I said, the river's across the street and the stream, you can see here is the riverfront area in here, but it's well outside the limit of all of our disturbance, so. There is a, and again, there's a retaining wall right here on the side of the property. So just to facilitate this grading, we're going to extend the retaining wall. That max height here at the clearing, it's probably three to four feet. So it's not a very high wall. It basically chases the grade back as it goes up slope. So that's basically it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. And as I said, the applicant's here too, if you have any questions about the use of the property.
Okay, thank you. I would turn to the rest of the board and ask what questions we have for the applicant.
I'll start. So the garage door to the 3,000 additional square feet?
Yes.
Is that going to be a vehicular access?
Yes.
And is there a grease trap or is it just a tight tank?
Because we're not discharging to sewer, it just goes to a tight tank. If we were going to the town sewer system, we'd have to go through a grease trap before it got to the tight tank.
Okay, and so, so the line I see going from it is a leader pointing to it, that's right?
That's a leader pointing to the tight tank. So in here in the building, you see the trench drains inside the building and it's piped directly to the tight tank.
Just for my edification, a tight tank is essentially just a holding thing?
Yes.
Tank that'll then be pumped out of.
It's a watertight tank that can't leak. So if any pollutants get inside the tank, it won't leak out to the ground.
Okay.
And it gets pumped out by a septic hauler. And it's, you know, based on the use, it's not a heavy automotive, there's not going to be a lot of traffic in there that, you know, tank's likely never going to see any type of effluent, but it's building code.
So you say it's a trade shop, what, what type of trades?
He operates a powder coating business.
Powder coating, that's what I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Okay.
I have a follow-up on that, if I may.
Sure.
Just try, I don't want to interrupt your thought if there's more going on. Try to wrap my mind around that a little, I'm not, I, I am not an expert in powder coating or anything similar, so I know that full well. And my, from what you said, my understanding is that the powder coating would be happening within the existing structure and the rear is going to be storage or storage and there'll be, I'm just trying to understand what we're looking. I am confused because I thought I understood the rear to be storage and then it sounds like vehicles would be moving in there. So I, I'm missing something in my understanding.
So the existing structure right now is basically an automotive garage space, it's open bay space. This type of trade shop, it's, it's an open floor footprint, you bring your equipment in, you know, I'm sure Chad can explain it better, but you know, the, the, the painting, you know, however, they have painting booths or bays and then they bake it in ovens. So powder coating is all baked in. So it's, it's basically a wide open area where they operate.
Got it.
Different activities.
What I might offer you is the garage doors to get the equipment in.
Yes.
And how, because that would, that would be my understanding.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. So that is all cut, what is the, what is the proposed grade of the cut?
The proposed grade, we're at.
Means it's three to one?
You're about 44. At the existing building, 42, 43 is around the whole existing building. So we'll have a cut of about 12 feet in the building corner and then it gets back to grade.
And does it go up at three to one?
Two to one slope.
Two to one.
Yeah, we're grading at two to one to catch grade here back before our property line. And we're stabilizing here with a low and steep slope.
Speed next. And I must apologize, my thing is still loading and it's gone off again, but how wide is that, that peystone diaphragm?
It's three foot wide.
Do you think, in your estimation, that's wide enough to capture all the flow off a two to one slope for that?
Yep, it's a, it's a very sandy porous soil up here. It's a three foot wide. And it's deep, it's three feet wide, it's two and a half feet deep, so it's a heavy, heavy stone volume. It's a big void. It's wrapped in filter fabric on all sides, so the fines in the soil don't migrate into the stone, so it maintains that volume. And then there's a, basically a four inch, four inches below the top stone is another filter fabric, so that's the part that gets maintained and cleaned out on a regular basis. And all that's in the O and M plan.
Okay, that was my next question. There is an O and M plan and it specifically calls out the peystone diaphragm?
Yep, and the, and the dry well maintenance.
Did we get a review? Graves?
It did go to Graves, right? I haven't gotten it back yet.
I haven't heard anything from Jeff.
Okay. I know Jeff was off for a week and he's been, been busy.
It is a vacation week, so a lot of people have been out.
All right. Any other questions from the board or thoughts or discussion?
None for me.
No.
I, I do want to ask more about the curb cut. I mean, I understand it exists, it's all pavement practically, right? Practically the entire frontage of it?
The entire frontage is pavement, but it's, it's separated by an island. So there's a, there's a several hundred foot island in front of it.
Okay.
In front of the property.
In the right of way?
In the right of way. The right of way line's back here.
Right.
So the town owns back to here. So the whole curb cut, everything's in the right of way, but the road is here.
It's almost like a service road.
It is almost like a service road.
I know, it was, it's kind of confusing.
And it's what, that and one or two other properties that, that are served by that same configuration?
Yeah, like this, so the corner property line's here, but the, the next curb cut is, and this is a 20-seater lawn, you know, that's at least 80, almost 100 feet beyond his lot line.
Even.
To the next property.
Now, I think the speed posted there is 45, but I mean effectively it's 55, 60 miles an hour, people go down that road and it's a high volume. Is, is there any additional proposed work in the right of way for signage or directions or anything?
No. It is a fast road, but this obviously is right across from the DPW driveway. It is pretty wide open, the site distances are 1,000 feet in either direction plus.
Upside there, so people tend to slow down in this spot.
Yeah.
I guess that's all I got. I will mention that I don't, I personally don't think it's prudent to approve a site plan without getting back from review.
I, I would agree with that 100%. I would rather hear back from Graves Engineering before we give a, you know, give yea or nay or what have you. So.
When is your, the next meeting, two weeks from tonight?
Yep. So does that work for you to come back two weeks?
Sure.
Okay, great. And hopefully by then we'll have heard from Graves and.
That will be, I'll follow up with him. I did have one question. Do they intend to put a sign up, freestanding sign?
Possibly. I mean, could that be like a condition of approval if it's going to be signed?
Well, it's supposed to be on the site plan. So any new freestanding sign that requires a site plan is supposed to be approved by the planning board by the bylaw. So what I don't want to do is have you get in a situation where you're ready to go and get your sign permit and have the building commissioner say, well, but it says right here that you can't do that, you got to go back and see the planning board.
Could we, what about a building mounted sign?
Yeah, that's fine. So if you, if you think you might want to put one, it may be worth it for you guys to get together this week. And just drop a dot on there. And it doesn't, you don't have to show us what the sign looks like, you don't have to say how tall it is, you just have to say where the location is so that when the board approves the site plan, there's a location for the sign on it.
Okay.
Excuse me, but wasn't there, wasn't there already like a double pillared thing with big huge piece of equipment on top of it for this?
That's, that's probably down the road.
Next one, okay.
Yeah.
So there's no existing signage?
No, I think that, was there one on the building?
I think there was one on the, there was one on the building at one point, I think.
In the past, I think I remember seeing something. So basically if, if you want a pylon sign up by the street, we need to show something on the plan now. If it's on the building.
On the building, it doesn't matter because that's just, okay. I mean, you're not really relying on drive-by business for the most part, but I didn't want you to get in your head that, oh yeah, we're ready to do this and then find out it's going to be 12 weeks before you're ready to actually do it.
Yeah, and they're saying that Graves Engineering hasn't provided a review back yet, so they want to wait till we get that review before they close the hearing in case they have questions and we need to make changes, they don't have to reopen the hearing.
Yep.
So, but two weeks should be all, we should be able to get something back from them next week. I'll make sure of it.
I do have one more question on, on the plan presentation there, that you've got, you've got the, the river setbacks, right?
Yes.
And then what are the lines that are radial from the river?
So with a culvert, so when you look at riverfront area with a stream, perennial stream, it runs parallel to the stream, just like this, right?
Yep.
This is the stream here, when you hit a culvert, it's directly perpendicular from
Okay.
The head wall. So where the culvert meets the head wall on both sides, riverfront area comes perpendicular from there, it's not included along the actual culverted section.
Interesting.
Before, before we.
Has the fine and the wetland protection asset, you can look it up. I'm not making things up.
Before we see about continuing the public hearing two, two weeks from now, I, I would actually just kind of ask the applicant to say, say that, I know this process feels labyrinthine, are you comfy with everything that's going on or do you have any questions that you, you need to hear from the board about just to understand what's happening right now? Okay?
Thank you.
Great, you're welcome. What's that?
Public comment.
Oh, thank you, public comment. So because it's a public hearing, is there any public comment? Seeing none. To me, it sounds like we're, we're looking, we're probably looking to continue until two weeks from now. I would ask for a motion from the board.
A move that we continue the public hearing for 525 Chase Road to our next meeting, July 24th at 6:05.
I will second.
Six, what time?
05?
Okay. I thought you said 25, which was, was really confusing to me.
Oh, I throw them out there sometimes, just keep you on your toes.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you very much for coming and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, looking at our agenda. Looking at our agenda, that was the public hearing for five twenty-five Chase Road. Next up is for us to continue our discussion of the first right of refusal for parcel four on Leamester Road or part, the parcel on four Leamester Road. Um, I know that we were, uh, my understanding is we, our memory, we were waiting to hear back from the Open Space Committee about their recommendation on this. Is that correct?
That was what I was hoping for, but we haven't met yet.
Okay.
Not sure that there is a meeting scheduled.
And the, I think the meeting
It'll be this Wednesday?
is scheduled for Wednesday. The select board is taking this under consideration tomorrow evening.
Okay. So then.
So, uh, I, I would just turn to us and ask, we can make no recommendation. We can recommend either way, but looks like we're not getting the Open Space Committee's uh, response before the select board makes their call.
So it looks like.
So uh, we did get the, again, in our, uh, in the, in the box for this meeting, we did get the info again, so we have it available. What thoughts do people have? What do we want, do it, what do we want to recommend either way? Or do we not have a feeling on it?
I think the place that I was coming to at the last meeting was that it's, it doesn't seem like it's necessarily valuable for the town, uh, to take on and try and, uh, you know, use as, as public space or, uh, parks or anything like that. But it was the same thing of like, it's not necessarily, um, you know, looking for, uh, the recommendations of the people that we put that to, uh, to make those decisions. I think my position is like, it's, I don't think the town needs to take this spot, but we'll leave it for, um, the Open Space Committee or I guess it'll end up being the Select Board, to make the decision as they see fit.
Cause all the Open Space Committee does is inform us of their feelings so that we can then hear their thoughts on it, agree or disagree, and send that to the Select Board. So, Adam, I would just ask, I don't know how formal, like the, the formality of the process here in that, are we making a recommendation that is yes or no? Can our recommendation be no recommenda, what, what is the?
Uh, it, it's, you're making a recommendation that you feel this is either, there's a planning value to this and this is what it is, or you don't feel that there is a planning value to the town pursuing their right of first refusal.
Okay.
I mean, you can choose as a group to not forward any recommendation and the Select Board can make from that what they will.
I personally would, my personal preference is to not make no, I don't think it helps the town personally to not say anything, but that's me. Other thoughts? We've heard from one member of the board.
I mean, I would say I was leaning more towards not making a recommendation, um, leaving it up to the Select Board to make that decision, but I do see what you're saying where, you know, you'd rather be for or against, so we can at least have our feelings. I mean, I, I don't, based on the meeting, that wasn't a meeting. I didn't see any value in the town being interested in that land, um, in general. I, you know, I don't, I don't have any opinion really either way on it. So I'm fine with saying no recommendation. I'm fine with saying, no, we don't, we don't recommend that they look into it. Yeah, that's just my feelings on it.
Kind of bouncing off that a little, like I think where I come on it is, I don't have a particularly strong feeling whether or not the town should go for the land. But from a planning perspective, uh, i- if our recommendation is yes, there is planning value to this land or no, there is not, I don't know that I see the planning value. So I think my recommendation is no, because it sounds like a recommendation is not no, don't do it. It's, no, there's, there is not specific planning value to this. And with that being the context, I don't think I personally see planning value, but I'm still very open to being swayed on that. Do you have thoughts, Mr. Allison?
Oh, there's certainly not going to sway you because as far as planning value for this, I don't see any value for the town in the planning perspective from, from the planning board perspective. But I mean, for conservation, from agricultural, from community, from, from numerous other ones, I can possibly see some value, but again, it's twelve acre parcel, it's just over, just, just a little over twelve acres and it's, it's fairly inaccessible. So I, I would not, I, I would, um, for, for consistency, I would, I would, uh, forward my vote to be, um, no interest if, if it came to that. Or as was previously stated, um, no comment, I guess. But, I mean, as far as planning, I don't see that, we can't put a school there, we can't put a firehouse there, we can't, you know, you can't put a park. You, you might be able to put a park, but again, that's really not planning, that's.
Well, I, I would, I would argue that even if it has value as agriculture or, um, as recreation space, I mean, there is a planning value to that because the, I can see it, the, I can see a strong argument that there is maybe we're not saying definitely put X, Y, or Z here, but I think, I would argue there is an argument to say, that you can say, this does have value to the town and we're not saying what that, w- we're not concluding what that value is, but there is value for the town having this to use on one of these fronts. I would argue that's still part of the planning process, maybe not.
Sure.
I guess I'm hesitant to not say anything because I, I don't like lack of communication and since our communication in this is very formalized in what we can say, I would rather give them a thought. But I, I'll take other comments or, uh, a motion from the board on how we should perceive, proceed. Be that no, be that do nothing, be that make a recommendation either way.
I think most everybody is leaning towards no.
That, that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Is that fair?
I move that we recommend not to, uh, pursue our first right of refusal on parcel four Leamester Road.
I will second.
Moved and seconded. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There we go.
All right.
All right, we have a recommendation for the town. This makes me wonder, and, and I don't think that just one instance here is enough to worry about per se, but the kind of delay we've had with this makes me wonder if our process for this is ideal or if there's some way we could.
No.
If, if there's a better approach, I don't know that it's.
It's state driven as far as I know. Everything, everything to do with this process is completely dictated by the state, is my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, please.
Um, yes and no?
I suppose my thought is specifically, I don't know that, I, I like our reliance on the Open Space Committee because that is a group with a vested interest in a deeper knowledge than this board may have as individuals. I'm left personally feeling a, I guess a little frustrated that we have a group, part of whose tasking is to give us the recommendation and the group, un, I mean understandably, cause that's life with volunteer government work, wasn't able to meet and give us that recommendation. So I wonder if there's for the, cause we, the board is not obligated to have, to hear the open, to get our opinion from the Open Space.
Correct.
That's, I certainly don't want to not hear it. I don't even know that we need to policy change this award. I'm just thinking out loud here that I'm left kind of wishing I had more info from those who were, who have done this thought process before and deeper than we have.
So I think Mr. Allison's right. The process at ten thousand feet is driven by the state. There's certain metrics that they have to meet in order to have a filing considered to be, uh, qualified, whether it's a qualified offer or a qualified package for removal. And that gets vetted by town council and then we get the go-ahead to, yes, everything's fine, review it and get back to us. Every town can create local policies for the way that things are distributed, discussion, that kind of stuff. So this, the, not every town has an Open Space Committee that meets regularly. So not every town has a planning board that looks to that group for recommendation. I think it was probably only about ten years ago, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, that Lunenburg started looping the Open Space Committee in on right of first refusals?
I've got more than ten years and they were in place before I got on.
And that, the same process was, okay.
I believe so.
Uh, maybe it was ten years ago that they developed their metric that they started using.
Possible.
So, I, I mean, I think it has, I think it has worked. I also think that this board could choose to talk with the Select Board and say, how about we just have Open Space forward you their recommendations directly? And, you know, maybe that way it cuts out some of the noise in between. I don't know. It's, it's really up to you guys. But, you know, I think they have valuable input. I think they have a lot of experience. I think the last two or three that we've done, this board has been ready or at least appeared to be ready and was waiting for something to come out of Open Space. So I think it, it's hard with an ad hoc committee that is made up of folks who are busy with personal life, but also a lot of them are busy with other committees as well. So, you know, I get what you're saying and I think that's a conversation that the, the four, maybe hopefully the five of you at some point should have.
Yeah, I just, I'm mostly just kind of, I, I think I'm mildly venting. When I say I'm mildly venting my frustration, I don't want that to come across as frustration with the Open Space Committee. But with wondering if there's a way for us to to not have the scenario where we really wish we had the extra info and don't, like we have it somewhat. I don't know.
Well, if, if I may, I'd like to clarify what I previously said is, is, is the process that we follow that's not state driven, I think is, is, is good. And, and that's not at all what I was saying about the, that my, my understanding of the process driven by the state is, is, is extremely limiting. That unless you're Johnny on the spot and immediately you, you, you've got all your balls in motion and everybody is working on it, then it's almost impossible to get a full recommendation from everybody involved and have all your ducks in a row is to be able to actually pull it off. All right? So I guess the, the thing, the most recent thing is, is the three sixty flat hill, the old orchard, twenty-four acres of orchard. That would have been worth pursuing in my mind and, and, and other people I've spoken with, but it's just that the timeframes are just, they're, they're cutting our legs out, basically.
Especially trying to get the financials. You know, if you're not a city where city council can adjust and amend budgets on a dime, you're, you're really, you have to, you have to know in thirty days or you're not able to get a town meeting together and pull that together to start shifting money for, you know, unless you have a fund somewhere, but even then, unless you're buying a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar parcel, there's not a lot of communities that have, you know, five, six, eight hundred thousand dollars just kicking around, waiting to buy that parcel that someone's going to try and turn into houses.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but the CPA, the Community Preservation Act, if we had adopted it, there are three different uses for that money that's accrued and I believe that acquisition of property in this sort is one of them.
It is.
Okay. So, and we've already tried three times
Yeah.
to get this town to accept that.
And, and the CPA in twenty twenty-three is wildly different than the CPA was in two thousand and one. Uh, it used to be essentially a dollar for dollar match.
Oh, yes.
Uh, and I think it's like twenty-five cents to the dollar now.
But still, it's something.
It, it, yes, it is.
And it's a fund and it's a place to lump some money for these rainy day, last minute situations. So, I mean, that's just my, my plug on CPA again, but.
It also creates another committed to staff and
It does, yep.
and get volunteers for it.
Yep.
I, I, I he, I hear value in that and I also hear the difficulty. If, if only there was some method by which we could broadly solicit the opinions of the townspeople so that we could decide if something like the CPA is worth, uh, pursuing in the long run for the value of Lunenburg, almost if we had some kind of master planning session coming up.
I think it was only like three or four years ago, the last time we tried it.
Uh, no, it predates me.
It predates, does?
Yeah. So it's been like, it's been almost nine years.
Maybe we do.
But, uh, as a note to all of our friends at home, if you are watching now or wa, uh, on the TV or online later on YouTube, if that's something that's, uh, if this is the kind of talk, uh, that is appealing to you, please, please, please engage with the master planning process. This is go, you're going to hear me plea with, plead with you about that a whole bunch because your opinion is literally what matters here. And the master plan process will set our direction and kind of say to the community, this is what we value, uh, for the next ten, realistically, possibly twenty years. Mr. Willsmore, I apologize. It looked like you wanted to say something.
Oh, I was just, I was, uh, trying to get, uh, couldn't relocate the information of when the next actual, uh, master plan meeting was supposed to be happening.
We don't have anything scheduled.
That's why I didn't know then.
Excellent. So all y'all at home, the best way to get me to stop being a broken record is in fact to engage with the process, the more the merrier. All right. Next on our agenda, uh, well, we need, do we need to actually, did we? Yeah, we did.
Did vote.
Okay, good. I'm pretty, um, I'm assuming that's why I'm here. Next on our agenda is, uh, decisions for lot A, five twenty-four Northfield Road. And is this just for us to review the decision and make sure everything's copacetic?
And then you have to sign it.
Okay. That is in our meeting files, a six twenty-six, twenty-three decision.
All of my files are still loading. I'm glad I got here early.
You should have a paper copy in front of you.
Oh, I do, but I'm just complaining.
You were not a complainer, you were vociferous in your concerns.
I notice stuff.
And we do not need to vote or anything, cause we already did. This is just
You didn't have to vote.
looking at it and making sure this is what we all understand.
Correct.
Great. Condition number four is there, which, perfect. All right. Do you have the copy for us to sign?
I do. You can sign it now, you have in ours to sign too, so you can sign everything at the end if you want.
Oh, you just sign everything at the end?
Yeah. You just have to have any discussion in the open meeting.
Okay. Is, is there any discussion on this?
None.
Nope. Looks consistent with what we talked about last time.
Great. Very good. In that case, we can move on to board discussions. Master plan. Master plan.
Uh, not a whole lot going on. I met with the consultants today. They, I shouldn't say not a whole lot going on. There's, they're in the process of finalizing the public engagement plan. So essentially they are going to create a website. That will be like planlunenburg.org or something like that, where they can direct folks for information that's constantly updated for surveys. For things like that, for easy engagement. Uh, and then they want to focus on getting out face to face. Farmers markets, other town events where they can engage with people about the process. And they can sort of get people to start trying to participate. They're going to create a physical model of the town. For these engagements so that people can interact with it and be part of it. Going forward, Mr. Brenner is going to join in on our biweekly updates. Just to keep. Everything moving forward and have the board have a voice in those discussions. Uh, I think it's important that the board feel engaged with the consultants at those sort of, sort of meetings. So I'm, I'm pleased. And he gets to do it from the comfort of his own home, which is lovely. The. Plan loosely will, is, is that is get, get some engagement tools ready, start engaging. They're going to put together a document for distribution to the board at our, at your next meeting. For your review to ensure that the board is comfortable with that engagement plan and what's happening. I plan in the next week or two to. Pick a date at the end of August, beginning of September to call the steering committee together to organize and. Start to get their feet underneath them. We still, I'm hoping that tomorrow night we'll get a member from the select board. I've had a couple of people reach out about at large membership, so you'll probably see those folks at their next meeting. So the more seats we can get engaged, the better it will be and, you know, maybe. These discussions that you guys have that. People you meet, the hands you shake, people will feel engaged and, and want to come forward because. I have two people who've expressed interest in the at large, so that leaves four more seats if you guys like these two and say, yeah, go ahead.
If, if we do have somebody that is interested in one of those, should we be directing them?
Yeah, they can go to, what I would suggest is they can, if they have questions or want to talk about it. Call me, stop by, email me, whatever. If they're like, no, I definitely want to do it. There's a how to volunteer page.
Okay.
There's a volunteer, I hate calling it application. It's like an information form.
Sure.
If they fill it out, check the other right master plan steering committee and send it to me, I'll bring it to the board. At the, the next available agenda. So the, you know, the more people that get in on that, the more people that are involved, the better off we're going to be.
And that means if you're at home and this sounds interesting, you don't have to talk to one of us. You can, I mean, we love to hear from you. But you can fill out that form and get it to Adam and. You'll be there too. Well, I mean, you'll be in the list of people. Great.
So question, is, is this app? You didn't like to call it application. Is this the previously known as Talent Bank?
Yeah.
It's basically the same?
It's, it, yeah, it's, I think they call it a volunteer.
Volunteer application sounds appropriate, right?
I don't even think it's an application. It's something different. It's like a volunteer information form or.
Talent bank form for everybody who's been following along.
Yeah. Except it's not called Talent Bank. Cause I told someone that and they're like, I can't find it.
I didn't know where you changed the name. Now I do.
So things are moving along. They, the consultants are hard at work. They were. Starting to talk today about when they would be proposing to submit work product for the steering committee to look at and when chapters are supposed to be ready. And I said. You guys have a little more engagement to do and some more visioning to do, but they're. They're juiced about it and they're, they're working hard.
Great. All right, anything else on master plan? Solar bylaw.
So, oh, you go ahead.
I can bring up my, um, so. At the, um. I know our last meeting, I, I brought up the, the notion of parking lot solar. As saying, we kind of talked and really saw that that's not something that is doable in Lunenburg right now. But. Maybe there would be interest. Now, since then, there was an economic development committee meeting and Josie Gilchrist at that meeting. Uh, said that she had been in a, I can't remember, I have it in my.
It was a listening session with Senator Warren.
And the big message to small business owners, at least to small business owners, I remember the full scope of the meeting. I'd have to go back and look. What she said was that there's a lot of money in the Inflation Reduction Act. For green technology. So. What I said to Adam was personally, I would love to see us kind of really try to move on solar bylaw. To, if there's money out there, the federal government is looking to give businesses to go green. Wouldn't it be great if we can try to get that solar bylaw? Like something that's acceptable to special town meeting in the fall. So we can be as business friendly as possible, like overtly business friendly. And try to help them get a chunk of that money for things that are objectively better for the environment and people seem to like. And could help bottom lines, tax base, blah, blah, blah. So, um. I kind of, I have other info from the EDC meeting, but that was something that kind of fell out of that was I saw. An opportunity for us to try to move forward with that. I would encourage us to move rapidly. Rapidly enough to have it at special town meeting in the fall. So again, our local businesses can take advantage of this money if that is something they wish to do.
My response was, I don't know if we can do the whole solar bylaw by fall. Because it's controversial at best, as I think only one of you has really experienced in its truest form. However, I think that if this is something the board's interested in. We could make parking lot solar and accessory use within the commercial and industrial zones. And what that would do, it would, it would require a minor amendment to the solar bylaw, but that would just be an exemption. Of parking lot solar from the large scale solar definition. And then. Within the accessory use, you can, I would suggest that it be a special permit. And that it be conditioned by A, B, C, D, and E within those zones. And that would allow for. Commercial industrial users to start putting these large scale racking and solar over their parking areas. As a way to generate income for them, reduce heat island and. Maybe defer some of the green field solar development that. Has been popular. At least was three, four, or five years ago.
And it's, but it's board discussion, so I kind of had this idea of a reason to move forward, but I'm curious what we all think.
I, I honestly, I think they sound like pretty good ideas. Just in general. And as a little bit of a tangent, just to go to your comments of getting like public involvement. I can't remember the name of the woman that brought this to us, but you know, uh, four months ago, she came to us and said, you know, uh. There's an issue with cutting down sections woodland to put up solar panels. What can we do to use the space we have? And it has become. A thing that we are genuinely like trying to put forth and trying to improve our town with. Just to, to follow up on your statements of like public involvement and what can come from those. That is it.
Yeah, no, thank you. Good point.
Yeah.
Lynn Man.
Yes.
Lynn Man is the person who brought it forward. So I guess my first question is, how many other towns have a bylaw for parking solar?
That, I, you know, I know, I know Wilburn has something that allows it. I don't know. If Lancaster has a specific bylaw. I know that if you go down 70, the. I hate calling them junkyards, but the junkyard on the right there, if you look out in the back, they've got their entire yard. Covered in them. Big enough that they drive loaders underneath them to, to pick up and move the, the vehicles. You know, they're, they're more prominent. I know that there's, I know in Framingham at the, the REI, they, they've been there for over a decade.
In Gardner, I, I don't know how their bylaws are structured that allow it, but I know they're allowed because they're at Hayward Hospital. And all the park, not all the parking, because Hayward has a lot of very far flung parking. But the parking lot closest to the hospital is all covered in solar panels that way.
So just a little devil's advocate here, um, I don't think that I would like to be compared. I don't think I'd like Lunenburg to be compared to Wilburn, Framingham, or Gardner. At all, right? Ever in my mind. How, how appropriate do you think, how fitting to the, to the. Community, do you think it is to have these parking lots covered with solar?
Well, I guess I'm thinking if you look at. Walmart, if you look at. Even Unitil, although that would be kind of a, that'd be an ironic placement. If you, or if you went down to, to Lunenburg Central, they just built, you know. Almost 400,000 square feet of warehouse. I think that having solar covering those parking lots would be completely appropriate. Uh, I mean, I think even at Walmart, you go up there and you don't think, wow, this is a nice rural place. You know, if, if your mother decided to cover her hayfield in solar to, you know, reduce the heat island, I might say, well, that doesn't, that changes the character of that area. I don't know that these racks change the character of an already developed commercial site. It's more an addition onto that site. I, I don't think that we're going to see Jack's Variety put them in. There's just not enough space for it to be feasible. They're too close to the road. These are going to be for larger footprint developments, um, things like that where. There, you know, you're, you're using already impervious, already developed space. And essentially these are going to. Reduce the heat island that we have in some of those places. Because rather than reflecting that heat back up off of the Batuminus, they're going to absorb it into the, the solar panels. And it's going to have a, a somewhat changeable effect on, on how. Those things react. And it might even. Alter the way that the storm water is picking up nutrients or interacting with the, the basins because. It's not hitting hot asphalt. It's hitting asphalt that's been, you know, at least partially shaded.
I think I'm of the opinion, and I think that's a very good question, Mr. Allison, um, I'm of the opinion. I would love to see, knowing that there is potentially money on the table. For even smaller and medium sized businesses. In an ideal world, I would love to see us try to make any bylaw changes we have. Also be available to them, knowing that. The number of smaller, medium sized businesses that could potentially take advantage of it would be much smaller. But the economics might work out a little better if the government's kicking in some funding there, if federal is.
They're just taking it from us and giving it to other people. That's all they're doing.
Sure.
Right.
But.
Just being clear.
I, I would like that. Since they're taking it from us, I would like us to get as much of that money as possible.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Because if we don't fight for it and we're not doing things to get it back, it's just going to go to other communities. What, what, now that said. I don't, I think for me personally, most commercial spaces, I think, what if the parking lot was covered in solar? I don't feel like it would change much because a lot of the. Commercial spaces are, I mean, it's already a developed piece. But I also see the value that if we do this. By special permit, I talked to Adam some in the office being like, why special permit? Is that unapproachable? Is it this or that? But I think. In the end, special permit has the advantage that it is at least on some level subjective. And gives us the ability to take into account the character of the area and to. And to hopefully. Guide the process so that we're not, people aren't. Lighting the streets of Lunenburg in some unanticipated way. With rows of solar panels that do hurt the character and fundamental nature of the town. It's my own opinion on it.
So what, I, I think what I'm hearing here is like, we do want the, or. If we are going to have the ability for parking lots solar, there should still be some like setups, like how big is the parking lot? Where is it in relation to? You know. How is it going to interact with the rest of the town or who goes by it or any of that? But I would definitely prefer the idea of continuing to develop, develop spaces. Instead of, you know. Developing undeveloped spaces for it.
Yep. I wholeheartedly agree with both of your comments. I just, at that moment, being devil's advocate, and I will say. I will say that, I mean, as far as when you drive around Massachusetts, I am personally disgusted by how much. There is just panels everywhere, everywhere there are solar panels and, and, and quite honestly, I, I'm somewhat proud of Lunenburg, have not, have been able to. Kind of tuck them away, but at the same time, we've lost a lot of forest land. We've lost a lot of farmland. We've lost a lot. In general, to these, these solar developments and what do we have, three or four of them now?
Four.
Four.
Yes.
Yeah, and they were pretty much thrown down our throats, very similar to 40B. Correct? Not, not much different.
The first two, I, I, I didn't have any, anything to do with other than the wrapping up of.
But I mean, as far as the state driven components.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is something the state wants, and this is something the state is making us do. Excuse me. But again, I, I like the idea of, of utilizing already currently disturbed areas and don't get me wrong, and that's, that sounds like a great idea. It's just, I mean, Walmart, they allow people to camp in their parking lot because they have a great view. So what's going to happen to that view if you cover it with solar panels?
Well, you're not gonna. You're not going to change the view because the view is this way and the panels are here. So it essentially becomes covered parking of a sort.
So I look, I like to look at the horizon with the roof over me. Is that what you're saying? I don't personally, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, the other thing is to that point, that's Walmart's call. They, they.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, they, if.
I was gonna say, do you, do you frequently camp at Walmart?
I haven't yet, actually. It used to be Kmart. I was doing that. Kmart used to let us do that.
Newer places every year now.
And I mean, you know, the, the, the. Bylaw can dictate how far from the edge of the parking lot, how far from the lot line. I mean, so there, there's ways that this can be shaped to. Minimize some of those appearance and continuity concerns. And then that would just further be. A conversation for the special permit process.
No doubt.
So I feel like what I'm hearing overall is yes, there is an interest in Adam writing something up so we can look at it in detail and there is. Potential interest if we like it and trying to move this forward towards a special town meeting in the fall. Do I, do I understand that as the general consensus of the group?
Yes.
Sure. Well, more specifically, what I'd like to, to see Adam do is put together, you know. Sets of other solar bylaws currently that, that allow for this parking and then we can review those. And then we can come up with what we like out of that rather than. Being fed something.
Can I just do both at the same time?
I guess so.
Because I, and I, and I only say this because in my experience, when I've. Given boards things and said, let's talk about what you like. Sometimes it's really successful and sometimes it goes meeting to meeting to meeting and I, I don't get any feedback. and I, I don't get any feedback. So I'm happy to give you source material and put something together that I think makes sense for Lunenburg. And that way, you can sort of use them together.
I like both myself.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Take that, people who say Lunenburg isn't business-friendly. I mean, not that we can't improve things anywhere, because you can, but. And driveways and entrances would be the other topic for board discussion. I know Adam sent us, right before the last meeting, one copy. And I know he then sent us a second copy with, I think, yeah, there's some minor changes in that.
There are.
And what was the source of those?
The fire chief and the building commissioner. So really, there were two things that, and I'm not married to any of this. I'm happy to alter or change any of it. But the questions that I really wasn't firm on was length of, maximum length of common driveways and number of lots you wanted to allow to be accessible. The rest of it I felt pretty good about. But again, I'm happy to have discussion and make any changes or alterations.
I had some questions about the other parts that I, again, failed to email to you ahead of time. To become helpful that way. So in B three, a common driveway will not be used to provide lot frontage required by the bylaw or by the subdivision control law.
Correct.
Does that real, my hope with this would be that we can make common driveways better without increasing the total number of buildable lots in the town.
That's the purpose of that.
And does that accomplish that, do we think? I don't know the answer. I'm, I just was trying to think.
I think that in conjunction with five, each lot that shares a common driveway will meet the minimum dimensional requirements for the zoning district in which it is located as outlined in this bylaw. Specifically, each lot will have the required amount of frontage located on the street, which connects to the common driveway.
That may have answered my other question, which was, why does it need to be the same street?
Because that's the way the frontage is defined in our bylaw. So frontage is, you're required to gain access to your building lot through the frontage.
That's a good reason. Okay. I had an explain please, but I want to look back and see what my, what I wanted to explain. So if other people have questions or thoughts, I don't want to.
When it talks about maximum number of lots and maximum length, is the idea that, like, once you go past that, it's effectively just a street? Or like, what, what stops that?
It, it's sort of a fire protection thing. You know, they carry like seven hundred feet of hose and, you know, so twelve hundred feet, the fire chief saw it and he wasn't worried about that. I mean, some of them I saw were five hundred feet. And, and I, we have some already twelve hundred foot driveways for single-family homes. So I was really just trying to make it so that we're not talking about, like, a mile-long common driveway that really starts to get squirrely about how does somebody get back there and access it if there's an emergency and.
Okay.
And the number of lots was really just trying to be thoughtful about giving some ability for folks to combine driveways. You know, two is great, but, you know, I mean, some, some places do five and six. I think that gets to be a bit excessive, because then you're essentially making a small road.
Yeah.
Even for four, you kind of are. But I can see a place where it would make sense to put one driveway in that serves four lots that were cut from, from something else and, and have it be functional.
Okay.
You know, and for commercial, you know, I think with that, if you've got frontage, the fewer commercial access roads you have, the better. And then you can signalize. Especially when we start looking at, you know, we don't have a lot of large lot commercial available. If we were to rezone areas, I would expect it to be something like Chase Road and/or Mass Ave and/or Electric Ave. Those are all fairly busy roads. And consolidating curb cuts would probably be wise if you're going to expand the commercial offerings. And so the more lots you can do to one, the more likely you are to hit a warrant level where putting a, a traffic light in makes sense.
Sure. Okay. I, I think I answered my own question.
Okay.
But in section B four, where the access structures or uses provided by the driveway is substantially different from that which would be provided through the required lot frontages, the special permit will not be issued unless the planning board finds that the proposed shared driveway and its location are in the public interest. Is my understanding that that works with three and five about not just rent, totally increasing the number of available lots? Okay.
You know, you can find a safety reason. You can find a reduction in pavement reason. You can find, you know, anything that becomes a public interest that you can justify in that way.
But it, no, that makes sense to me. And I, this is more for my own edification, I think. But in section C seven, turnouts will be provided along the common driveways at intervals of three hundred feet. The turnouts will be eight feet wide, twenty-five feet long. I was just curious, why three hundred feet? If there's nothing there, I'm sure there's a reason for it. I just don't know it.
It just allows for folks crossing paths to have.
Got it.
You know, to not, if at any point you run into someone, the furthest you're going to have to go is like a hundred and fifty feet.
I, I hadn't really processed that being a driveway. It could in fact be driveway size, so that's wise. Yeah, okay. No, thank you. Total sense. I appreciate it.
Question, currently, our, our common driveway, is there, is there, is there clarification between residential and commercial?
Technically, if you read it, we don't allow commercial common driveways.
Why would we?
Why wouldn't we? I mean.
It's different. It's not a residence. It's a, it's a business.
Correct. But if multiple businesses are sharing a driveway, then you're reducing the amount of conflict points along a road.
Sure.
To a single place.
Yep.
So you make traffic slightly more predictable and potentially create a signalable place as opposed to a series of other curb cuts that will just have staggered traffic.
Okay.
I mean, my experience with DOT over the years has been that if you can consolidate curb cuts and driveways, they're like, huzzah, let's do this. And so while it can be challenging, it also can have definite safety impacts.
And, and why would the grade, max grade be different between residence and commercial?
Why did I do that? Especially since it's twelve overall in the bylaw.
Currently, right?
Yeah. We can change that. I would say a flatter grade would be better for the common driveways just to avoid issue with more traffic on it. So if you get stuck in your driveway at twelve percent in January, you're only impacting yourself. If you get stuck in the common driveway, you're impacting everybody else. But I can raise the eight to ten.
If you get stuck in a commercial driveway, you're impacting everybody that's already there. They can't get out.
Yeah. Maybe we'll drop the ten to eight.
Maybe that, maybe that's why you don't combine commercial driveways. But I don't know. I mean, Walmart, Hanaford, that's a park, right? Industrial Park? I mean, it was permitted that way.
No, that's a shopping plaza. That's all one, but that's all one parcel.
It's one par, okay, but it's multiple. Yeah.
It's one parcel with multiple uses.
So technically, Bright Farms can't use their driveway currently under our bylaw. Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah, I don't know how they were.
The answer may be, we didn't realize it.
The more you know, the less you understand.
Amen.
So I, I think it would behoove us to, to review the other moving parts. As our, our zone, our, our bylaw says that you can only have two hammerhead, reduced frontage lots adjacent to each other.
Correct.
So I think that that probably is why our current shared driveway is for two.
But there's no reason that a shared driveway has to be for reduced frontage.
Exactly.
And, and I mean, so that's sort of the reason why I approach this, this way. Because I would say more of the common driveways we've seen aren't for reduced frontage lots.
Not a bad point.
And I can see a scenario where you have two, for example, you might have two adjacent standard frontage lots, two reduced frontage lots whose reduced frontage, the, the long neck, as I always think of it, come out on the outside of those two others. And then you can have one common driveway servicing four properties there very easily. I mean, they could even split the lot line and everything. Not that we're requiring it with this, but.
And, and I mean, a lot of the requests that we get for common driveways that don't meet the bylaw are for site distance issues or wetlands issues or things like that. And often, they come as part of an A and R for an existing home that has a large lot that is dividing another parcel off. And they want to use the existing driveway and branch off of that. So really, I was trying to take into consideration the requests that I recall the board seeing over the years and how we could do something that would address those requests and maybe make it a little bit easier to do some of these common driveways, but also make it a little more consistent and give the board a little more negotiating power as opposed to sort of the back and forth that we, we currently have. Because it's really sort of undefined what the board can and can't ask for and what people, what the expectation is. And this way, the expectations are laid out pretty clearly. And folks can come with something that the board can see and say, oh, this, you know, and, and if these expectations are different than the board wants, or the board wants more, then we can add them. And that way, everybody's dealing from the same level. I feel like we've, you know, sort of like the scenic road stuff. We've had some really great ones, and we've had some not-so-great plans, applications, thought processes in, in how, how that gets applied. I'm looking for consistency is really what I'm trying to bring.
So we've also in the past talked about cluster development, cluster, having a cluster bylaw or cluster development. It's kind of like, it's, it's not, it's, it's a subdivision sort of thing.
Sort of like our open space, but.
Right. And it makes me wonder, I mean, Flat Hill, Village of Flat Hill, that's one lot, and it's got a private road that loops around it. And it's got, it's got shoots off of it. So that's forty-five houses. That in itself is sort of clustered development.
Yeah, it's a PRA.
Well, yeah, it's a residential area, but. So I mean, there are benefits to that as well. And, and if we modify this and then we, I'm thinking too far in the future, but we had talked about cluster development, which is utilizing a large parcel and allowing smaller footprints. And, but these are all individual lots, right? These are subdivided lots.
These ones are like A and R lots.
No, if we were to do a cluster bylaw, would that be one?
It could be a lot of different ways.
Right. So they could be.
You know, I mean, I've seen some stuff with the co-op housing now, where they create essentially two lots, and they let, you build small bungalows almost that have a, a shared, common outdoor area. And then the other parcel is associated with this, but it is either open space or ag land or something like that. And, you know, the, the folks who own in the co-op either pay for maintenance of or do maintenance of the, the additional parcel as part of their, their cooperative living. That's down-the-road sort of stuff. And, and as part of the master plan, we are getting a review of our zoning bylaws and recommendations for how to move forward and, and sort of, I hate this word, but I'm going to say it, synergize it with our master plan. And how the two, how can we kind of accomplish master plan goals through zoning? And what things in our zoning might just need to be looked at in a more immediate fashion. And to your point with the cluster, excuse me, there is a state model for open space development that actually dictates open space development on parcels over a certain size is by right. And it would be a special permit to do conventional development.
Yeah, I think I did that CPTC training a couple of years ago.
I had a thought, but it fluttered away.
Turnouts, I think that as well as every three hundred feet, I think it should be at the, with, the point where it goes from a shared to a single should also have a turnout.
Okay.
I mean, does that make sense? I mean, I'm looking at item seven.
Yeah. I, I, so.
Well, that's just for commercial, though.
No, no, it's not.
It's not?
No, that, that's, these are the design, design standards for everything. Two, two is just the commercial limitations, and then the rest go for everything. So if the trunk comes up and one is cutting off here, you think there should be a turnout at that as well?
I, I'm only thinking because if somebody passes the house that they think they're going to, and they don't want to go all the way up to the next house, then rather than invading this next house's privacy, they have the opportunity to turn around? If that makes sense to anybody else besides me. I mean, my mind works strangely.
I was thinking, I guess my thought is, it's a, so that wouldn't be the turnout at the spot. It would actually have to be a little beyond for that to work. Because the turnout at the spot, they'd already be passed if they went past the, the drop, the, the place where that branches off.
Well, I mean, the, the shared driveway is ideally going to be splitting pieces from two lots. And once it no longer splits pieces from two lots, once it's all entirely on its own lot for the single house that it serves, I would think that there'd be a turnout. I mean, the fire, fire rescue, they might appreciate that. Deliveries, they might appreciate.
Yeah, but this is actually, maybe I grabbed the wrong one. Because the fire chief actually, I thought, made a recommendation that was really, really great. And I don't see it on what I sent to you. Oh, it's in there. Is it not? Oh, he wants to put a sign at the origin of the common driveway that shows.
Street numbers.
The street numbers and a, like a picture of the common driveway so that they can easily, so it would be like, you know.
Those are pretty common.
Yeah, it, it would show the layout of the common driveway and label each branch with the house number.
Oh, that is smart. There's, there's one on Lancaster, I think.
Yep.
The number of times I've gone to the wrong house to pick up like effectively a, a free cycle item or something, or buy nothing or whatever it's called now, that.
Yeah, the entrance drive, of the driveway shall have a sign indicating the addresses located on the common driveway to include a diagram map showing their locations.
Which is?
And for, I, for whatever reason, I think the wrong one got uploaded. So I, I will send this out to you.
All right.
But that's, that, I think that addresses what you're sort of talking about. I hope.
I also wonder that, I mean, it's a driveway, not a road. So I, I wonder if they can just hit reverse.
Yeah.
Possible too, yeah.
And, and, you know, we could also do something where we could, we could take it one step further from that and at each branch, the house address shall be posted or, you know, so when you, when the branch comes off, there needs to be a, a posting of the, the address.
Oh, okay. I like that just as a kindness to.
Well, it's just, yeah, to the UPS man.
Yeah, yeah, honestly. To the UPS person to deliver.
Eighteen-year-old kid delivering pizza.
Yep.
So a question about number six. The ten ton got changed to thirty-four hundred thousand pounds?
Yep.
What for?
Fire trucks.
Okay, well, why don't we just use something that's standard in Mass Highway and say two, uh, I guess, I guess that works. It's just, that's just not typical. I mean, you got, get H twenty loading. H twenty loading is for, you know, highway. And H twenty is twenty thousand pounds and thirty-four thousand is more than that. So I'm not quite sure why it needs to be that heavy duty because H twenty is for tractor trailers. And I would think that tractor trailers would be heavier than fire equipment, but maybe.
Yeah, this, this came from, probably from the building commissioner for, I am guessing it, it has something to do with NFPA code.
Okay.
That was going to be my question. If, if it's relevant for code somewhere, I think it's fine. I mean, great really, but, because you need to. But that was going to be my question is, is that, do other communities use a similar number or is this more plucked from the air?
Uh, no, I mean, I, Brian doesn't pluck things from the air.
Going to know. So number nine doesn't say who's responsible. It just says it must be clear of obstructions.
Number nine. Common driveway shall be clear of vegetation, overhead obstructions, allowing for a vertical clearance of no less than thirteen and a half feet.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the homeowners would be responsible for that.
Shall be maintained. Common driveway shall. So I think you have to put the onus on the homeowners or whoever the agreement is for because shall be kept at or.
Yeah, are we, I don't know if it would be typical or not. Are we requiring some kind of agreement for maintenance of the driveway?
Yes. No occupancy permit shall be issued for any uses or structures utilizing the common driveway until evidence of recording of the required access easement has been filed. And I thought that it said. Okay, we'll call it access and maintenance easement.
Probably call it utility as well. Access utility.
Mm-hmm.
And a maintenance easement would by definition require some kind of explanation of how this is. I, I don't want to lock people into one thing forever, but like, because I get that.
I think that's a probably a discussion for the, the special permit process.
Okay.
Because what I think.
Yes, a special permit, fair point.
So, you know, my common driveway may be daylight from ground to sky. Yours may have a bunch of trees overhanging it. Amanda's may have something in between. And so how and what needs to be done is going to be different for each of them.
And one may be a very traditional split the lot line up the middle, just like we've always, or, I mean, just like we've had while I've been on the board. And one could be twelve hundred feet long.
Of sneaky road that goes through everywhere. One could have a culvert.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense to me.
And that way, you know, with each, with each application, you can dial in what that maintenance looks like and.
I know what my thought was on this. I, I don't think it's a reason to not do this at all. But I can envision a scenario where a change like this to common driveways could create amongst, uh, the subset of developers who like playing a little faster and looser with regulations. I can see a scenario where we get more applications for A and Rs where the frontage is maybe more illusory than might appear. I, I don't think it's a reason not to do it. I think it's wise of us to be aware that could be the case of people saying, oh yeah, no, it's good enough and hoping we'll say it's good enough. And knowing we're, we're not supposed to do that because A and Rs can't have, they have to have real frontage, not it looks good on the map, but.
Another question is the max length is different for residential and commercial. Why, why is that? It's based on the number of hoses they carry.
True, and I, I was figuring commercial tends to be more in the water district properties.
So you're going to run hydrants down these private common driveways?
Yeah. Or they're gonna.
Is there a requirement for that here?
No, but as part of the site plan approval and the special permit, that could be.
If it's not required in the verbiage of, of the application, then how can we require it in the site plan?
Because site plan covers fire coverage.
Okay.
As a, as a safety matter.
Okay.
I mean, the common driveway is just about how you gain access. The development of each site is, is going to be governed by site plan approval.
Great, you have a long driveway.
And I mean, if they're going to be running water, it's, the water district is going to tell them to have hydrants anyway for clean out and terminus.
I, I'd suggest that maybe half the houses in Lunenburg have wells.
Well, and that's, that's why I, that's.
Have access to town water.
Correct, and that's why, but ninety percent of the commercial uses do.
Okay, but you can't put a hydrant on the well.
Correct, which is why.
Residential's lower.
Residential's lower. I mean, if you want to dial it back from twelve hundred, we certainly can.
I was just noticing that they're different.
I mean, one, there, there's a higher number of lots and two, they tend to be in watered areas. Not all of them, but.
Can we put a provision in there for eighteen hundred feet, given you've got town water and twelve hundred feet?
Yeah.
I mean, does anybody else?
I, I, I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying and that's why, that's why I always wish with bylaws, you could include some, like unofficial language, which I know you can't, but this kind of like, yeah, this is the law. But FYI, person reading this, be aware that, you know, yes, it's eighteen hundred feet, but be aware you're likely to get an expectation of blah with, and yeah, we can't, I wish you could because that'd be, I feel like that could clean up so many issues with people who read the bylaws and go, but I thought.
So currently, when we, don't we have to have a paved apron for a new house? It doesn't have to be a paved driveway, it has to be a paved apron.
Correct.
And what is the current, isn't it like two percent within fifty feet from the road?
I don't think it's.
So this is saying three percent within seventy-five?
I don't think that there's a.
Oh, that's right, I'm, I've got so many other bylaws on my head. I think, I think the only mention we make is in subdivision.
I, that would be my guess and that would be road, not, um, not driveway.
So if you're allowing up to ten percent or twelve percent or eight percent or whatever it is, maximum grade and you're, you're limiting them to three percent at the road. I mean, it makes sense because the reason they do that is you don't slide into the road.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right? And accessibility, but. I don't know, I just, I just wanted to make sure it was consistent with other things that we've got as far as similarity.
Given that this looks like it requires a couple of minutes of research time, my recommendation would be, is this something you could double check Adam and get back to us on for next time?
Absolutely.
Great, just that way we can, I don't want to discount any concerns, but we're not, look, I don't think we're in any position to say, yes, we want this by the end of this meeting. Therefore, a little back and forth that way, I don't think will hurt. Any other questions or thoughts for Adam that we'd like brought back to us for the next meeting on this topic?
I, I, I do honestly think that B three is kind of useless. And I'm just really not into putting useless stuff in here. I mean, a common driveway will not be used to provide lot frontage required by this bylaw. Why do we have to say that? I, it just makes no sense to me. I mean, we've already said that you have to have the minimum required frontage. It has to be on the same road, this, that, something else, A and R process. I just don't understand why that would have to be here, but.
It's more of a CYA, I think. I agree, I think.
How are we CYAing?
Well, I don't want, I put it in because I didn't want it to be something where somebody tries to quibble over driveway equals street for this reason or that reason and there's houses beyond it and I should be able to split my lot and.
I think I like keeping it because I don't want us to deal with that. Well, like I hear it and.
I, I know what you mean, it is, it is.
Yeah, it's redundant.
It's redundant, but.
It's redundant because somebody might find a loophole and then we've got to deal with it on this end.
Or someone will think they found a loophole.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be a real loophole for it to be a, a discussion where there's someone, then someone leaves frustrated because they were sure that they had the right answer. And look at Lunenburg not really writing what they mean and. I agree, it's probably redundant, but I feel like the cost of ink, probably worth it in this case? Maybe not.
Now, I also recall, uh, instance where the bylaw said something about must not be encumbered by easements for more than a certain percentage of the width.
That's reduced frontage lots.
Okay. Do we have to say anything about that in the common driveway?
I don't think so. I, I find that language odd. I'm not sure why it's in there.
Too, but it's there, so.
It, it, agreed. I, I mean, so as long as you don't put the common driveway in a reduced frontage lot, you should be fine.
That's what they're typically used for though.
I think it really, it, it splits the baby. I think some, sometimes it's them and sometimes it's not.
And then if we've got an access easement for the entire width of it, then that verbiage would, would again be redundant because it would be, not only redundant, it would be conflicting.
Well, no, because you couldn't, then you couldn't do it on a reduced frontage lot. You'd have to do it on a full frontage lot.
All right, just something to consider.
It might be, be throwing the baby out with the bathwater or too unrelated, but is it worth potential? If we don't know why that language exists and it potentially gets in the way of this bylaw, is it worth part of the overall bylaw change being striking that wording?
Yes.
To justify the million plus dollar lot that wouldn't have been built?
Maybe.
Neither here nor there.
Well, I mean, what, what I find sometimes with language like that is people ask why it was there. And when I say I don't know, they say, well, then we can't take it out because it's got to be there for a reason.
That fellow's gone.
Which fellow?
Well, one of the fellows that I'm specifically thinking used to say that.
But I mean, I, I know that that was, that's been thrown at me a couple of times. I'm like, but whatever the reason they put it there, it, it, A, doesn't make sense. B, it's, you know, it, it's obsolete and C, or, or C, it's illegal or nonsensical. Oh, but there must have been a reason.
Well, of course, if someone, if someone out there in the public did know the reason for that original, they could always reach out to you or any member of the planning board to educate us. And I think we'd be grateful. Engage with your town government. All right.
All right.
I feel like our conversation has largely slowed. And as time keeps on ticking, ticking, ticking into the future, probably time to move on unless there's anything else. Very good, we've got minutes approval for our meeting from six twenty-six, twenty-three and the public hearing from that date for the lot A, Northfield Road. Were those minutes in the meeting folder for today?
I didn't see them.
I don't think they were.
Unless they're in with the decision.
Yeah, I do, I realize I, I don't think I've seen it.
Yeah, they're not in there.
No.
Can always pass it until next meeting.
Is there any harm in passing the minutes approval to the next meeting? Does that screw anything up?
No.
Do we have to do anything to pass?
Gives you more to do. No, well, no, because you can just.
All right. Then I, let's wait till we have it. Great, okay. We, we'll be approving minutes in the next meeting anyway, so that's how these things work. Committee reports. Open Space Ad Hoc Committee.
All right, well, just confirmed our meeting is in two days.
Awesome. Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee.
I spoke to the chair on Sunday and questioned when our next meeting would be and he assured me that they would be coming up soon. So as far as I know, nothing scheduled, but we were trying to do two a month. And it's been over a month, I think, since we've had a meeting. But, um, no report.
Fair. Agricultural Commission.
That meeting we will be having next, not this Thursday, but next Thursday. But I can comment on the farmer's market. We've been, uh, we've been doing very well. We've had a. had a, uh, an increase in attendance. Uh, we had new vendors. We do have the A week, B week now going on, so some people are only gonna be there every other week and that's gonna confuse some of the patrons.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it confuses myself oftentimes. I'm like, well, it's the wrong week. Um, but we're, we're having between eight, ten and twelve vendors typically. Uh, and last Sunday, we had a petting zoo. Um, they, it was not a huge zoo, but they had, they had little goats and chicks and, and chickens and ducks and it was kinda cool.
I'm guessing Amanda went by the look on her face.
We got home and Jerry said it was one of the best days he's had.
So, yes, the, the attendance is, is, is ramping up and, uh, we are hopefully gonna continue to add new vendors. Uh, and we are starting to come into the season that there's gonna be a lot of fruits and vegetables available.
Woo!
We're expecting to have a cherry vendor and a blueberry vendor. We currently have a mushroom vendor.
What?
Real good. Real good, yeah.
Yeah.
The mushrooms are real good.
Yeah, I didn't know that. I didn't know that'd be decriminalized here, but if that's the way Lunenburg's go.
Got some of the locals from the beekeeper board, uh, running a, a little honey stand.
I bought two.
Yeah.
So good. So good.
So, that's, that's my update on the market.
Hey, folks, you like Lunenburg agricultural. Come to the farmer's market. Capital Planning Committee, that's me. Uh, it's not capital planning season. So, no report, nothing going on. Economic Development Committee, it was a very robust meeting this time. Uh, let me go back to my notes from that meeting for the June twenty ninth meeting. Um, as I said before, there was that report from the Inflation Reduction Act meeting that, uh, listening session that is what, um, I even have it big scribbled here, red on my notes. Should we fast track solar bylaw? Um, otherwise, reports on just new businesses, nothing really revolutionary for us. The school for autistic children that we've seen. Uh, a lot of people commented about three Lancaster Ave with the insurance company is going in and, um, everyone's talking about how great that building looks. Um, and we see progress over at Uma Flowers, uh, forty three Summer Street. There is new business coming in, Travelers Antiques, which I don't remember the exact location of, but we haven't seen it because it's a, it's a slot in that requires no intervention from us whatsoever.
It's the old P and S truck.
Thank you. There's some LBA bus, not LBA business, but talking about some LBA things, including a mixer coming up at the end of July. Uh, the meet and greet, uh, we've talked about this before, that the Economic Development Committee would really love to have a meet and greet between town officials and, uh, business owners and potential business owners who would like to come to Lunenburg. That has been put on the calendar for Thursday, September twenty eighth at five PM going until the thought was seven thirty or eight PM. Uh, and the hope was that there would be multiple town officials there to, to humanize town government, right? So, things aren't going off into, so when they're putting something before the planning board, we're not a monolithic entity. We're people that, uh, like, for example, as many of us as can be there, well, then they've met us. Then we're humans and hopefully that makes the pro, the process feel easier once they've kind of been like, oh, these are all people I've met and chatted with. Um, again, Thursday, September twenty eighth, starting at five PM. Uh, that was the decision there. I, I mean, mark your calendars, but wait for an official announcement just in case, but yeah.
Joe Wells, we had something.
Nope, that was it. I was just gonna ask for the date again.
There we go. Yeah, that, I think that's the major things from the meeting that would apply to the board. Give me one second to call back. And Stormwater Task Force.
Uh, meeting should be next week.
Excellent. I do love the name of that. It's very aggressive sounding. MRPC.
Uh, MRPC has not met since our last meeting. We're not meeting this month. We'll meet next month. And then MJTC, we're meeting Wednesday of this week.
Excellent. Thank you. Directors item, there's none. Lovely, moving on. Meeting schedule. Uh, all meetings are at six PM, uh, held at Town Hall unless otherwise indicated. We have our upcoming July twenty fourth meeting and our August fourteenth meeting. Yeah. Ongoing items. Is there anything there that is new or relevant?
There is not.
Okay. Public comment. There is no extra public in the room. I don't see any extra public online. Excellent. Not excellent. I always love people here. Board comment and/or concerns.
I have two things. What, they'll be quick. One, the July twenty fourth meeting, there is a chance I won't be here. It's kind of in the air. I'm either not gonna be here, gonna be here by Zoom or I'm gonna be here. Just kind of depends on travel.
Oh, fair.
But I'll let you know what the decision is before the day comes. Um, my second comment slash concern, um, is there any recourse that the board can have with construction vehicles being a little crazy on, on public roads? So, I, I live on the lane. There's some work being done on Flat Hill and those big, big trucks do not stop at the stop sign on Elmwood. They blow straight through the stop sign and go up the hill multiple times and they go really fast.
Coming from Elmwood.
Coming on Elmwood. So, I'm assuming they're coming off of two A on Elmwood and then they make a right turn and go up the hill. And I understand it's hard for a large, heavy vehicle to get going again and go up a hill at a stop sign, but those are.
Still a stop sign.
Yes, they're big. I mean, I wish.
That's harder to survive a crash with one.
Yes, that's true. I think the cops should be posted there twenty four seven because even like citizen cars don't stop there. But I'm concerned about the construction vehicles mostly.
And I'll follow on that too, uh, because I know, we all know where they're going. Um, they're going to three sixty Flat Hill and, um, there's at least one spot where the excavator has been on the pavement and chewed it up. And I'm pretty sure that's not allowed either.
And like in the road too. It's like.
It's in the road.
It, there's barely a lane to get around it. That's it for me.
I will reach out to the police chief and the DPW director and see.
That would be great.
What they can do about that. And I have a couple.
I was just saying, just again, for the, uh, for the sake of educating our, um, our viewers at home.
Mm-hmm.
If they do have concerns like this, because it's very easy for those of us who are on the board to raise this, or raise a concern like this. What would be a good way for them to handle it if they have similar concerns about construction vehicles not, not obeying road signage, uh, potentially parking or being, or working where they should not on the public right of way?
So, working or parking within the public right of way where they shouldn't, I would contact the DPW because they have control over obstructions of public ways. Uh, failure to follow traffic laws, I would follow up with the police department.
Excellent. Thank you.
I mean, anyone's always welcome to call me and express concerns and I will forward them to the appropriate parties, but.
But they can do so directly.
Correct.
And actually, get their words heard rather than.
That is correct.
Words through you. Perfect.
And I mean, what I'm probably gonna do is take their information, call the police department and they will probably either go and check it out or call them back and get their words as well.
Wonderful.
Perfect.
Thank you. Mr. Allison, you had something.
I did, actually. Uh, and it's a follow on of something that was mentioned earlier about, um, the, it was in CPA conversation. It would be just another board to populate. Um, when you look at Lunenburg and compare it to Groton, I think we're pretty similar size landmass and I think we're pretty similar population and, and, um, the population total and population density thereby because of, you know, um, and, and I'm pretty sure they have well over forty different volunteer groups. And I'm pretty sure we have like fifteen. So, if they can manage to do it, there's no reason that we couldn't manage to do it. It's just how do we get from there to, to A to B?
And it wasn't a reason not to do it. It was more of a.
I know.
A comment, uh, commentary on our inability to populate.
How many more positions are you gonna take, right?
Or, no, not, or how many, how, how many, how much trouble we have filling some of the boards we currently have.
EDC was almost a year.
Yeah.
Over a year, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Before we actually had quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty sad.
Do you want your town government running smoothly? Get a, uh, not talent bank form, but vol, uh, whatever you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to look at it right now and tell you because it's driving me nuts.
But you should contact Elaine Peterson at the Select Board's office, right? At the Town Manager's Office, I think.
It is a volunteer application.
There is. But in, in all seriousness, the town works when people are involved. You don't have to put in a ton volunteer for one small committee that meets once a month, once every other month. You're helping the town function and you're, and you know your voice will be heard. Um, uh, my own comment is August fourteenth, uh, Mr. Allison enjoyed running the meeting.
Yep.
Because, uh, ain't gonna be here. All right. Uh, that's it. In that case, no other board comments concerns. I suppose I would accept a motion to adjourn.
A move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We out.